I didn't say the pledge of allegiance together. Thank you, Jamie. Will you call the roll?
Councilman Jeff Capel.
Here.
Councilwoman Jill Cole.
Right here.
Councilman Lee Zerwanka.
Here.
Councilman Brian Gaff.
Here.
Vice Mayor Promote Chaverry.
Here.
Councilwoman Katie Schneider.
Here.
Mayor Mark Serken.
Here.
Seven present.
Do you have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
A move?
Second.
All in favor? We were scheduled to have a public hearing, but at the request of the applicant for Resolution 2023-01, we're going to delay it until they are ready. So we're going to move on to a second public hearing, Jamie.
We need a, I think we need a motion.
To table.
They said.
We're good.
Good.
Okay.
No, they said, yeah, I did check. We do have a public hearing. Jamie, will you read ordinance number 2023-01 by title only?
Approving a concept planned unit development for a 3.6 acre parcel west of Kenwood Road, opposite the Kenridge-Wake Lake neighborhood.
The way we'll do this is we'll let the representatives of Fisher Homes present their concept. Then we'll let the public weigh in. At that point, we'll close the public comments. This will not be the last time you'll be allowed to talk about this subject because this is just the first reading. We are not voting on this project tonight to approve or deny it. Then we'll have the council chance to, for us to ask questions or get clarifications. We typically don't deliberate over it. We just kind of get all the information we can. So we have a little bit of time to come back for this, for the second meeting in two weeks or more. So with that, I'm going to ask the representatives of Fisher Homes to please come home, come up and present their concept development plan.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Rob Hayes. I'm a community design project manager for Fisher Homes and Grand Communities. And my, our address is 3940 Olympic Boulevard, Suite 400 Erlanger, Kentucky, 41018. Is that better? Thank you.
I do have a portable one if it'd be more comfortable.
This is, this will be fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
So this is, and again, we're here to talk about our Summit Point community, our proposed Summit Point community. A little bit about Fisher Homes. We are a privately owned Cincinnati based home builder. We are the largest home builder here in the Cincinnati area. We were founded in 1980. We are also in five states, eight different divisions. We're very proud of our high customer satisfaction ratings and our quality of workmanship in our communities. And as our motto states, we are creators of the total new home experience, which we'll talk a little bit about today and our proposed community. The parcel in question, pardon me, the parcels in question are located just north of Pfeiffer Road, Glendale-Milford Road, on Kenwood Road or to the west of Kenwood Road. It's currently zone Summit Park District, and it's a little over three acres. There are a number of constraints and challenges with this site. Primarily, you know, it's an asymmetrical parcel and it is bordered by the railroad to the west of the site. Again, this is the site on the screen. This is our vision for the site. We're very excited to have this opportunity in Blue Ash. We're very excited to be close to Summit Park. This is a fantastic site. We'd like to complement the live, work, play aspects of Summit Park. We feel that this is a fantastic location in which to do that and to showcase our urban product. The concept plan, it's 22 fee simple home sites. Typical home site is 20 feet wide by about 70 feet deep. There are some variations. A couple of these sites are a little bit shallower than that and some sites are deeper than that just based on the, the locations on the site. All of these homes would be rear entry, served by a private alley. And then they would all have two car garages. As I said earlier, Fisher Homes is very proud to be creators of the total new home experience. We're very proud of our community design. When our sales associates will often say, customers are very happy with Fisher communities. They come into a Fisher community and they don't know why it feels better, but they, they feel that it feels better. And that's why that they, why they choose to purchase with us. We're very proud of our simple and understated community design. We want our communities to feel contemporary, but also respectful of the context. This is the proposed rendering from Kenwood Road, and I do apologize that we had to split it to fit it on the screen just for scale and for size. So the picture at the bottom left is the southernmost portion. Then the driveway is immediately next to the building at the, at the top of the screen. And then you're moving to the north as you go to the right and then to the bottom. We do have a landscaping plan. We, we're very proud of the time that we take to our, to develop our landscaping plans. Landscaping in this site in particular screens the railroad as well as takes into account the topography and the geographic challenges. The proposed product is our Midtown Collection. It's the Tustin, which is a low maintenance lifestyle product. We have from the low 400s, that is a base price. Typically out the door, these homes would be in the 500s to 600 thousands. But after you've added all of your options, but the very, very base price would be in the 400 thousands. They're about 2,000 square feet or larger. Each home would be three to four bedrooms and two to four baths based on those options. These are renderings of the exteriors. And then interiors. Again, we're very excited at this opportunity. We're very excited at this site. It's a fantastic location. We're excited to be able to showcase our urban product in Blue Ash. We'd like to provide high quality housing alternatives. Also while supporting local businesses and making sure that we don't strain city services, having a low impact on city services. We feel that the townhomes are very appropriate for this site, especially given that it is an asymmetrical parcel bordering the railroad, very constrained site. The acreage is, as stated earlier, just over three acres. So it's a pretty small site as well. So we want to maximize that value both for Blue Ash and for Fisher Homes. And there was also a question about trash collection. All trash collection would occur on the alley. Do you have any questions for me? I'm available to answer questions also from anyone in the public as well. But do you have any questions for me at this time?
Anybody have any questions they have to ask now or they're done with the presentation? I was going to turn it over to the public if that's acceptable? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So at this time, we're going to entertain public comments on this subject only. Okay. Later on in the, in the meeting, we will have hearings for citizens on any subject you want to talk about. So what we do ask is that we all treat each other with respect and calm. If you wish to speak, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. We want to have a chance to reflect on your comments. And so at this point, please come forward and and also if we can keep our comments fairly brief, if you just are going to repeat the same thing that two or three people ahead of you have already said, hey, just say, I agree with Mr. Smith and Mrs. Dolan. We'll get it that way. So.
Okay, thank you. My name is Maxine Copel Bookbinder. I live on Kenridge. I've a few very, very quick points about this. Okay. First of all, there are times when I want to go, when I'm turning, I'm going down Kenridge and I want to turn left onto Kenwood to go to 71 to Pfeiffer. There's so much traffic already that sometimes I turn right and go up to Reed Hartman to 275 to 71 because it's quicker than making the left hand turn to go to one block to Pfeiffer. So now we want to put extra housing there. So that's going to add to the congestion. Number two, um, when we moved, we, we've lived here a number of years. When we moved in, there were already houses on that, on that the acreage and they, they took them down. They widened Kenwood. And I thought, okay, they're never going to put any more houses there because who wants to live between squeezed and sandwiched between a four lane road, busy road and a railroad track? And if you've ever been passed there, you're going to know, you know how, how close Kenridge or Kenwood is to the railroad track. Why, why would anyone want to pay $400,000 for the front yard to look at Kenwood and the backyard to the railroad track? Where I live, I live right near Bratcher, which is like all the way down Ken, Kenridge. I can hear the railroad at my house. Okay. And I'm a good three quarters of a, I don't know, half mile, two quarters of a mile from the track. Okay. Third of all, this is becoming like a Joni Mitchell song, Big Yellow Taxi. Do we, does Blue Ash have to take every inch of green space and turn it into a parking lot? Granted, that area is not paradise, but it doesn't have to be turned into a parking lot. Just leave a green space. There's habitat there. There's deer. There's birds. There's why, you know, there's wildlife there. Why do we have to turn that into yet more apartments and more, more parking lots? Okay, I guess. I, I guess that's basically my point. Um, and as far as, just one last thing. As far as revenue goes, tax revenue goes, yes, you'll have more residents, you'll have more tax revenue. But from in 2007, uh, Blue Ash tax rate went from 1% to 1.25%. Since then, the income tax revenue has, it, it was, it went from 23 million to 37 million. We don't need the extra tax revenue right now. I say, keep the green space. Don't put expensive housing in, squeezed in between a busy road and a railroad track and make it more congested for the residents who already live there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a race.
My name is Peter Nord. I've lived on Kenridge Lake now for 22 years. And I first worked in Blue Ash when I was 14 before the city existed. So I'm well familiar with Blue Ash, having had a company here for many, many years. There's a house for sale on Kenridge Drive with a smallish yard at, which has been recently rehabbed at about $600,000 and it's been for sale for some time. And hardly anybody is looking at it and nobody's been interested enough for a smallish house. Recently rehabbed on a reasonably smallish lot on Kenridge Drive. Who would want to spend $600,000 along a railroad track? And remember the fires, North Fire Station is its other neighbor to the north. The railroad doesn't run all that often, but the firehouse runs 24 hours a day. And if you don't mind being awakened in the middle of the night when they have to go, then I suppose it's worth living there. But I think it's a marginal area and it'll be difficult to find people who want to live there and spend $600,000. And since this is a proposal that came to the city out of the blue and a city owned land, if you really want to sell it, I think you should open it up for an auction and see who would provide the city with the most dollar revenue for the city to sell the land to a developer rather than just accept the proposal that's come. So if this is a valuable piece of land for development, then you ought to auction it off and get the maximum value for the taxpayers of the city of Blue Ash. If you really need, are thinking that you're going to need the extra money in case the state legislature changes the tax rules and you won't have that income coming off of the business and you're going to need it from housing, then the solution, the only solution is to put housing on the airport or the, uh, the golf course. The golf course should be turned into housing in order to provide the tax base that Blue Ash would need if the legislature in Columbus changes the way the taxes to small communities like Blue Ash are collected. Okay. If you can't collect them on the wages of the factories and you're going to have to collect them on the people, you need to have lots of people. This is such a marginal development, be better as a park.
Thank you, Mr. Nord.
My name is Joyce Rainmore.
Put it down.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Joyce Rainmore. I live at 10554 Kenwood Road, which is directly across the street from the proposed development. When deciding to approve this building proposal on Kenwood Road, please consider that not all residents want new houses. Our community is flooded with overpriced, small attached homes. Our roads, schools and parks are already crowded. If you feel the need to develop this space, please develop it with the intention of creating something to enrich the experience of people who already live here. Furthermore, there is value in green spaces. Quite simply put, not every single inch of Blue Ash needs to be developed into something. When I bought my home on Kenwood Road, I knew purchasing a home on a busy road had its drawbacks. But I made the decision to do so after visiting the home in the evening hours when all the business traffic had died down. It was a beautiful and mostly quiet space. I could see my family living there and visiting with our neighbors in the Kenridge Lake Club. Across the street from my house is the beautiful green space in question where I love to take pictures of my kids and watch the leaves change throughout the seasons. I value the way this green space balances the business traffic that is also a reality of where I've chosen to live. I would hate to see it developed into townhomes. If Blue Ash finds it difficult financially to maintain this green space, it causes me to question if funds are truly not available for it or if they can be allocated differently to allow for it because our city's tax base is strong. Please understand that Blue Ash residents want the city to move in a direction that aligns with our values. It's therefore important to consider resident values when allowing new developments within our city and not only the city's bottom line, which is undeniably important, but is intimately linked with its values. Something about the space in question on Kenwood Road that no one can change, no matter what is developed or not there, is the fact that a train conspicuously runs through it. A lot of people find trains near the residence to be a negative thing, but you know who loves trains? Little boys. And if you've ever had a little boy or been a little boy, you know, every little boy goes through a train phase. And there's two little boys in each of the houses that overlook this green space. And since nobody can do anything about the train anyway, why not embrace the train? In talking with some of my neighbors about the proposed development, I learned that the train has been a part of Blue Ash for over a hundred years. It used to bring families to Blue Ash to visit a small carnival type park. It was in the Hickory Point neighborhood off Pfeiffer Road. My neighbor said, one of his friends who lives in that area has found a large gear in his yard from one of the rides that used to operate there. I think that's a cool story. I bet other families in Blue Ash and some of the dozens of families with little boys who live in the neighborhood behind me would like to know that. So perhaps instead of a home developer, find a developer who wants to make a train museum or a train park that generates revenue through memberships or concessions or something that lets Blue Ash residents embrace this train that runs through our city and that serves our current residents. In closing, I'd like to reiterate, the residents who already live near the proposed development like me don't feel every single Blue Ash green space needs to be demolished and developed with buildings. Our name is Blue Ash after all, named after the beautiful ash trees that could grow here if we don't knock them down. But if you feel you must develop that space, we prefer you don't put more houses there. Do something that appeals to the people who already live here.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is David Gentry. I live at 5259 Kenridge Drive. And this July, I will be living there 50 years. And we love Blue Ash. Our kids raised, was raised here, went to Sycamore. We've had so many people move from our area. Young people have come back and that's what you really want. You don't want these three story condos, whatever they're called in Blue Ash like that. I can't believe what it would be a nightmare backing out on the Kenwood Road. It would be a hazard and the traffic is terrible. Though I, I completely agree with all the folks that spoke here. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jen Menzies and this is Dennis Smith, my son. And we live across the street at 10512, 10512 Kenwood Road. We're right across the street from the proposed development. And then I first want to put, go on the record by thanking the, um, Blue Ash grounds crew for all their hard work. We see them out there regularly doing, mowing the lawn, clearing up the leaves. They just do a great job. So put that in the notes, please. I really agree with the statements that have gone forward already. This is not a great location for high end living. I ask members of council, would any of you spend half a million dollars to live on a four lane divided highway overlooking a railroad track on not just one emergency route, but two, the Sims fire trucks also go up and down that road as they go between the Sims locations. Secondly, I also want to remind council, you raised houses that were on that property when you widened Kenwood Road because you didn't think that this was a good place for residents to live. And I also want to point out that there's currently limited interest in this area for this condos at this price point. The Hickory Ridge condos, there are seven of them for sale and only two have been sold so far. And that's, and that's a much quieter location, but kind of comparable. If you think about it in terms of walkability, accessibility, things like that. I also wanted to address, in case council disagrees with the residents, those of us that are coming forward, some specific points that the developer has put into their plan. First off is the storm water retention issue. All of my neighbors, myself and both neighbors to the north and to the south have had sewer backups in our basement. And that's a direct problem because of the combined sewer overflow situation in Blue Ash. So when it come, rain comes, sewage comes into our basement. Paving over three acres of natural water recharge has a dramatic risk of impacting negatively are, negatively impacting this issue. I also wanted to comment that this, in the finish that Fisher Homes presented is not in keeping with the area at all. We're not a modern neighborhood. Most of our homes were built in the 50s and 60s. So a much more traditional finish would be more appropriate. And finally, um, the initial proposal that Fisher put forth is different than what they presented to you today. Their initial proposal was a series of courtyards and it had 21 homes and it had little blocks. And so many fewer townhomes were actually overlooking Kenwood Road. In their new configuration, they've increased it by one and made sure that all but five residences have to deal with the traffic and noise issues, which to me says they're just out to maximize their own development and not really thinking about the livability of that develop, of the development and of the residents that might live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to talk about this particular project?
Uh, hi, my name's Ron Brown, not very good talker, but I live at 10462 Kenwood Road. I've been there 50 years and I bought that house when it was two lanes. And I used to have four trees in front of my house and all that. And traffic subsided when at nighttime and you could be out sitting out in the front on the stoop and it was really nice. Can't do that anymore because all the trucks and everything. Trucks going by shake the road, actually shakes and vibrates stuff in my house because it goes so fast. When they made that road wider, they raised the road three to four feet in front of my house. Before it was lower and there was a ditch. So your friction off the tires used to be killed, keeled into the dirt. Now, since they raised it, everything, all that noise reverberates back and forth. So you hear a whole bunch more noise and the noise bounces off the warehouse there and then. So the area went from what I've seen, they'll go clear cut that area like they did at Procter and Gamble and Matthews back there, they're building something. They cut all the trees down. I mean, probably been a couple hundred thousand trees. Cut down them Blue Ash in the past year. So I can't see cutting down them trees. You just plant it new ones and that and they're starting to grow. And it helps get rid of some of the noise. And that, and as far as water and that goes, it shouldn't, should stay open for water can go into the ground and not run off and everything. And those are the ugliest buildings that I've ever seen. They look like Stratford Manor from the, from the World War II era. I mean, they don't complement anything. Anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Being no one, I just want to make a comment. I think a lot of communities would be amazed at how much we can get across on a pretty passionate subject and treat each other so well. So thank you very much. I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting and turn it over to my councilmates for any questions they might have of the developer.
I would say that I have some of the concerns that were expressed earlier and, you know, the desirability of the area, whether it's a good investment or not, I don't know that that's necessarily in our purview. But I, I liked the earlier design much better when it had much more interesting roof lines and they were not all just a straight long line of road or of homes along the street. And I think the materials were different and I just think it was a lot more appealing a project and would have fit in better with the neighborhood than what we're looking at right now.
My comments are very similar. This doesn't reflect what we initially saw. And this really doesn't fit to the neighborhood.
I understand the orientation because there is an industrial building behind there. And sorry, I understand that. But just if you're the people living across the street, I think a different aesthetic would, would be more attractive, more desirable.
Yeah, I have to even agree with that because normally the, the attention and that I give to something like that and my normal like design and artsy IQ is so low that you'd think I was colorblind. But even I found that design to kind of be noticeably lacking. So i- if I'm thinking it's, if I'm taking the time, if you can even get me to notice that it's, that it's pretty lackluster, then it's got to be pretty lackluster. The difference between these designs and the initial designs we saw. If you drove by this right now and if you saw the photos up here, you'd think they were apartments. You don't need any more apartments. Okay. You know, the other designs look more like condos. They matched into the neighborhood better. So it's a night and day difference. I agree with all of you. I, I, I think I, I will say this, in a different place, I, I wouldn't mind that design in the more, you know, the, the label on the, the drawing that we saw was the urban product. And I think that is a really, a good place for it. This is not an urban setting. This is very much a neighborhood setting and this doesn't reflect the initial proposal we saw. You know, the city did go out for requests for proposals. So if it wasn't an auction, Mr. Nord, but we had asked anybody who's interested, you know, please, please, please express your interest. And we picked this project because we thought it, it had the, the best qualities. But what we're seeing tonight is, is not in line with that.
I agree with that and also want to say thank you for everybody for speaking up and sharing your thoughts. Some of these things hadn't really thought as deep about them as, as you guys have expressed, living right there, living across from them. So thank you for sharing those with us. And agree, you know, with, with what everyone has said. It wasn't the same proposal that we saw in the beginning. This one is, is not up to Blue Ash standards in my opinion and, and what we really want in that area. If, you know, we do move forward with this.
This one is, is not up to Blue Ash standards, in my opinion, and, and what we really want in that area if, you know, we do move forward with this.
I have one, just a small comment. I agree with all the councilmen has said that the look, the outlook, the architecture building these houses, it's not what we are looking for. And as everybody has said that when they really proposed before, it was a whole lot better than what you have proposed here. That's number one. Number two, that we really have to remember that we have sold this, this place or this land to the developers. So something is going to come over there. That's every need, everybody need to understand that. So we do not know what is being sold.
We haven't sold. No, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Been sold.
It's not sold that. I'm sorry about that. So that's, that's what my comment is. So.
Yeah, I, I think in general, we, we entertain requests for proposals, which can be anything from a single-family house on the whole acreage to condos to whatever. This is one of the proposals that were brought forward. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, that we did not say we want a certain number of condos on that property. It's the lands available to a developer, give us some proposals. So we sure deliberated for not deliberating, but that's fine. We're gonna, you're gonna have another chance to talk about this project. We are not voting it up or down tonight. We are just having a public comment meeting. At the next meeting that we do entertain it on the second, second time, there will be hearings for citizens before we would get to this resolution. So I don't think anybody's ordinance, I don't think anybody has to worry about that this is going to go up or down tonight. So it's not. So if anybody else has any other comments or questions for the developer, nobody had a question.
Well, would my question, it's probably something that would be more have to be answered by city staff than a developer. Do I ask that here? Should I just hold off a few more minutes?
You can ask anything you have a question about, about the project as presented. I think that's fair game.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to dive into were the conditions that were placed on this by the planning commission, specifically the first two and just for other council members, we're talking right at the, the bottom of the page there. So the first one was about the planning commission wants the applicant to construct a left-turn bay on northbound Kenwood Road for entrance to the north driveway of the development. The second one being the applicant shall construct an extension of the Kenwood Road Island at the south driveway of the development to prevent left turns onto northbound Kenwood Road. But then I also saw a note that said the city engineer did not feel that that was necessary. So could, could we flush this out a little more and kind of help? Because that kind of creates a decision point for us when it's time to vote on it. Can we get like a little more information on what to look at here?
Yeah, we can give you more at the next meeting before then, but I will just simply say we would recommend you strike those first two items from the planning commission. And Kelly was at the meeting and asked them to strike that they didn't. Because they just, well, just put it up there in case you want to consider. But yeah, we would strongly recommend striking.
Okay. And then the, the other question I had as well is, uh, some people have raised concerns about traffic. Like does, does 22 new, new townhomes in that location present enough traffic to rise to an issue where we need to hear more from the, the city engineer or someone studying that?
Yeah, generous speaking. No, the, the, the volume and the design of that is more than adequate to accommodate that be accommodated on those roads.
And I would think specifically what the homes are targeting, which are, you know, young, single people or empty nesters. Generally, I would think attractive family of three or four kids with all the bus rides and the driving. So I would think it wouldn't, especially just with 21 or 22.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay. We don't have anything else. Do I need a motion to close the public hearing? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December eighth, 2022.
Go move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Jamie, do we have any communications from council?
We do have one tonight, Your Honor. It's a liquor control request to transfer the liquor license from Elite Pizza, which was doing business as Mio's on Kenwood Road. They'd like to transfer it to DOABA Enterprises in Powell, Ohio, which is Delaware County. The police department, I don't think even needed to review it because this license is going out of our area. So if you do not request a hearing, I'll check that box and we'll send this off with approval.
Any reports from outside agencies? The mayor's report for December of 2022 will be entered into the public record. Do I have a motion to accept the financial report from December 2022?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move to hearings from citizens where you can talk about any subject. I'll just reiterate, if you wish to speak, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. If you have any materials to pass out, please give them directly to Jamie, the clerk of council. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. This is for us to listen to you and your neighbors. It's very unlikely we'll make any remarks immediately after you speak. We need to have a chance to reflect on your comments, sometimes research the subject, consider city codes. Sometimes we revisit an issue brought forward during miscellaneous business. The clerk of council will notify you in three minutes of passed and at that point, please wrap up your presentation. Most importantly, that's continue to treat each other calmly with respect. I can hear, if you guys, I can hear everything you're saying. So please, it's, I'm sure it's interrupting. Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I just want to give a little quick comment before first person comes up. At, at the, as you were closing the public hearing, it's not uncommon for the developer to kind of may, maybe make any follow-up comments to anything that anyone said. I saw his body language and so I said, hey, you can come up under open mic period. Typically, we wouldn't relitigate the subject, so to speak, once that public hearing done. But I said, hey, why don't you just come up under the open mic?
That's my bad because nobody had any questions directly for them. So I just let it go. I'm sorry about that, but you are welcome to come up. And I apologize.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. I wanted to very quickly address the change in elevations. When we met with staff, staff had indicated that we, we showed all of the elevations and they had indicated that they would be open to any of the elevations that we had presented. We had also investigated several other elevations for the site, but those elevations utilized less masonry. They were significantly more hardy, including our modern farmhouse elevation, which has a more traditional roof line. Are those, is that type of elevation something clear? It, it appears this evening that council would like to see something with a more traditional roof line. I just wanted to confirm, is that, that the direction that? Okay, thank you very much. And then I just wanted to reiterate, we are, are very excited at the possibility of building this product in the Blue Ash area and on the site. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mike Darden, Mike Duncan on Jarden Place and North Blue Ash, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. Few people who are left here. Usually when I come up this time of year, you probably know I'm here, it's tax season. If you haven't started receiving your W2s and 1099s and all the other good stuff, you will preferably by the end of the month and then you'll get your broker statements usually in mid to late February and on and on and on. In conjunction with this, you're going to have to do your taxes. Now, a lot of you do your own probably or you have a CPA or something, but for the people we serve, I'm with the Tax Aid, AARP Foundation Tax Aid. We try to serve our senior citizens, but we really, it's called the tax for the elderly, but we also serve low-income, moderate-income folks and pretty much anybody who comes to our sites, we, we try to serve. And we save them probably $200 to $400 on the average. It's a free service. All the people there are volunteers. Many of us work multiple sites. I personally, I work two sites and I will assist between 80 and 100 people a year. We're there from normally the first week of February through, you gotta give time to get taxes to go through in cases of problems. So usually around the 12th or 13th of April. So we're there for a long time. This year is in the past, the two that are primarily available to Blue Ash residents would be the Sharonville Community Center and the Meyerson Jewish Community Center. Sharonville is, if you go down Creek Road, it's pretty easy to get to. It's on Thornview. The Meyerson is at the, be the southwest corner of Sprowering Highway and Ridge Road. So pretty easy to get to either one of them. The Meyerson is only open on Thursdays. They only do taxes on Thursdays from the first of February, actually it'll be the second this year, through the end of March. And then the Sharonville Community Center will be on Wednesday and Friday. And they will do taxes starting on February the eighth through April 14th, I believe is the date. Having said that, there's a little flyer and it'll be in the newsletter that goes out. It'll be posted over on the rec center. It has phone numbers. You have to call for an appointment. It will tell you exactly what you need to bring with you. It has phone number for Meyerson. It tells you the days. It tells you the hours, all sorts of good stuff on there. So if you do have a capability of contacting our residents, especially our senior residents, but again, we do for pretty much everybody. I would say probably 80 to 90% of these two sites, people are 60 and older. Some of our other sites, we do have young families and we do have a few families that come in here, but in general, you know, we're serving senior residents and couples, singles and so forth. And we try to save people some money, which we do every year. Last year, I, I can't remember the millions just in the city or in the state of Ohio that we serve. So if you could get it out to the residents and stuff, I know again, St. Kelly Electronic File, that'll get on the website, that will get on our, the newsletter that goes out to folks and it'll be posted. Great service, free service. Please let people know. Any questions?
Since I just turned 60, is that why you use that date?
I just turned 70, so it's. Anyways, please just let the folks know and if you do have any questions, feel free to give me a call or an email. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adel Shemali. I came a little bit late. There was an item, item number five in reference to the property on Reed Harman Highway.
Please talk into the microphone.
So it was an item number five in reference to the property on Reed Harman Highway. The request for Kroger opening a fuel station. This item has been already?
No, they, they actually wanted us to temporarily table it, which we didn't even table. It's, the public hearing wasn't tonight. It's going to be a later date. We do not know when. So. But you can still make your comment. But yeah, if you want to make a comment, you can, of course.
Right. We own the property across from that street. It's used to be a long time ago, a medical building. It's an engineering building, high-tech group. I'm the founder of the company. I've been in Blue Ash for about 25 years. Previously, I was a faculty at the University of Cincinnati. I struggled with the city a little bit. Tried to see what is the direction of the city, trying to attract people to Blue Ash. I loved Blue Ash myself, the way it's done. I used to live on the east side or still live on the east side, but used to walk there on Beasley Avenue. Personally, I'd like to see, I see that we are demolishing these buildings up on Reed Hardman Highway, the old Blue Ash. Did somebody think to go talk to Intel? To talk to Intel, Intel. Let's go to Ohio, you know, our state there. Maybe we can convince them, come and get these things down here. But the other part, you guys want to put that corner across from the building that I own. When I first bought the building about 20 years ago, the city of Blue Ash came and tried to make a eminent domain, took away about 20 feet from the frontage of that building. They had this beautiful plan. They're going to put a middle greenery in the middle of the line, all these things. I struggled with that because I just had bought the building. Somebody sent me back then, I had paid $600,000 for a horrible place. I paid about $300,000 to renovate and move my office into the upper floor. And all of a sudden, somebody sent me a sheet that this building is worth $225,000. If you don't give us that land, we'll take the building. I called the Hamilton County Auditor. I will not tell you what they told me. But that all star was an F. I said, look guys, I've been paying these taxes on this building, what they want to do. But then, then sent me a city engineer or somebody, I don't remember the name. I'm an engineer. I'm a faculty. I'm previously a professor, tenured professor. So I said, oh, what's the deal? Oh, for the people, this, this and that. Well, guess what? I gave away that. What happened? No island was done that these people hit around because I know they're complaining about, no island, never. They brought a machine, bang, bang, bang around, broke the windows, do everything. Nothing happened. And today I have to live every year, I have to go fix the water valves, all these things underground. Why? You guys, I don't know what the hell who's planning these things. Right now, to make it worse, you have permits for the internet guys, all these things. They put poles, every pole, after pole, after pole on that corner.
It's three minutes.
Okay, so then, please, we don't need another corner on that corner. Okay, you need high-tech companies, people pay revenue. Look at how much we pay taxes. I don't live in City of Blue Ash. You don't need a gas station on that corner. Okay, and I can tell you, many of my employees have left because we get accidents every time we try to go out. And there was a, a young man killed about a year ago, something like this on that corner. Why did they get killed? People zoom in on that corner. And two of my employees get backtracked on that corner. Please take that in consideration. I do hope next time we get a bit better notice because I travel all the time. And my assistant called me tonight, he said, hey, you better go back and see what is happening. Sorry for being late. Please take that in consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hal Silverman. I have been a Blue Ash resident since 1983 and been building and developing in Blue Ash since 1980. I'm here to just talk about one thing and that's something that the council is going to see in the future. I don't know if it's next week or two weeks or three weeks or four weeks. But I'm here to talk about the median that is proposed on Cooper Road that will block our full access from Cooper, which we've had since we opened the center in 1987. Luckily, the city notified me that there was a change from the conceptual plan for the development at the Northwest Corner. And the conceptual plan did not have a median. This one does. I'm here not tonight to represent ourselves as owner of the crossings of Blue Ash and the Tower of Blue Ash, as well as the 15 retail tenants and 11 or 12 office tenants that we have, who have all used that as a full access. It's critically important to their business. And I would suggest that that median be totally eliminated and our full access be maintained. We do have leases with all of our tenants and everyone has a site plan attached to their lease, which shows that ingress egress is a full, is a full ingress and egress. As you all know, medians kill businesses. Example, Plainfield Road. Another example, Kenwood. Graders and a bunch of those retailers down there have suffered since they put the median in. So you're going to hear from me again, but I just think it's extremely important that change was tremendous from, I didn't even attend a meeting because I fully support the development. But as soon as I found out there's a median proposed that's going to block our full access, I immediately became totally involved. I do thank the city for at least giving me the heads up of the major change. And that's a substantial change. I did read the traffic report that was submitted with that developer's proposal. And that's a substantial change. I did read the traffic report that was submitted with that developer's proposal. There was absolutely no mention in that traffic report, which was done by an outside traffic consultant, also reviewed by my traffic consultant. There was no mention of a median and when this proposal gets to you to vote on, I would support it, but I think that not to the detriment of all the other retailers that have used that access for, since nineteen eighty-seven. I think if you were in my position, you own the center, you represent all those tenants. You have, you are the key corner of downtown Blue Ash and have been since nineteen eighty-seven, have one of the most successful shopping centers in Blue Ash. You would feel exactly the way I feel. So I, I would ask for your support in eliminating that median from their final development plan. I would also make a suggestion. I think if they did a write-in, write-out only at the Blue Ash Road entrance, that'd be fine. They can put a traffic light at Laurel and Kenwood Road as they proposed. And the parking, their parallel parking, this is just a little food for thought. I would recommend, if you want to create that urban feeling, I would, I would recommend that they put, say, no parking there from four to six. I can't hardly picture somebody trying to do parallel parking on Kenwood Road from four to six. It just, that, I look out of my office, look up Kenwood Road every day and it is backed up as far as the eye can see. After six o'clock, I think you could do it, but during that period of four to six, I think would be rather difficult. So. I appreciate you listening to me and some of you have heard it before and I'm going to have to repeat myself over and over on this. It's a critically important issue to me and all of the tenants at the crossings of Blue Ash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
Well, I find myself in the position of agreeing with Hal. Often I find that I'm not in agreement with Hal, but I drive on that driveway all the time, going up Cooper, turning into the shopping area, going to Blue Ash Chili. And if I discovered there was a median in there and no longer could make that convenient turn, I would wonder what sort of idiots thought that up. And maybe I'd run for city council and suggest that there are different ways to do traffic control. In looking at the proposal, I drove down Blue Ash Road into, I guess it's Deer Park by Galbraith Road, where there are townhouses being built that look identical to what's being proposed here. So if you want to have an idea of what's being proposed here, drive down Blue Ash Road to Galbraith and you can see they're twins or cousins. It's as if they came out of the same architect's handbook. If you're going to have people come and do developments, they ought to have original architectural designs from their own rather than pick and choose from what's available in the architectural literature. And if you notice, those townhouses had sidewalks from the front doors going down to the sidewalk on Kenwood Road. There's no place to walk on Kenwood Road. You go up Kenwood Road, you're at the firehouse. There are no more sidewalks there. You go down the other way, you're at the Shell Station. You can't conveniently walk through the Shell Station and continue to walk through, to the park. So there's really no walking entrance to the city park from where we are up by Kenwood Road, north of Pfeiffer. It's the driving city, of course. All those people are going to have to drive down there. There's no sense that even for the developers to put sidewalks down to the street. There's no place to walk on those sidewalks. So I think there's a lot of things that could be thought better. And if the city wanted to have the highest use for that land, you'd put apartments for the people that work at the ready-to-eat meals place because there are hundreds and hundreds of cars up there that use our streets every day. Those people could live right there in that little place. It would be a wonderful rental community and I know nobody likes apartments and I don't care too much for them either. But that would be a higher use than townhouses because those people that are working there need a convenient place to live. And that'd be nice.
Thank you, Mr. Nord. Anyone else? Me and nobody. We're going to move on to committee reports. Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilwoman Schneider, Chairperson.
Jamie, could you please read resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero two by title only?
Establishing fees for the usage of recreational facilities and equipment of the city of Blue Ash, Ohio.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
Second.
Are any discussion on this? So I guess let me give you some background. This is related, this is updating fees at the sports center. Question, any questions? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Gath.
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilman Capell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Next is the oath of office for Ashley Marnick, who is joining our recreation board. Ashley.
No.
We really appreciate everything you're going to do for the rec board. And you had your first meeting and hopefully it was, it was as interesting as I bet you it was. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly affirm.
I solemnly affirm.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Blue Ash.
Of the city of Blue Ash.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of recreation board member.
Of recreation board member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Could you both come over and sign, please? Mark, Mr. Mayor, I should say.
Thank you, Ashley, for serving. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And we have six or so different citizens boards and it's all volunteer. It all pays absolutely nothing. And you learn a lot about the city and get to meet an incredible staff that the administration has put together. So you get to give a lot of input to with what goes on in the city. So thank you all. We're going to move to Public Works Committee, Councilwoman Cole, Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jamie, would you please read resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three by title only? Authorizing the city manager to make payment for professional traffic signal system parts, repair and maintenance services and utility marketing, marking and locating services throughout twenty twenty-three. Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three.
Second.
This is a routine purchases. We do these every year and it's approved for up to a hundred thousand dollars. So it's pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments? Jamie, will you please call the roll? Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes.
Councilman Capell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Gath.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Seven yeses. Thank you. Next, Jamie, would you please, please read resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four by title only? Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of Bulk Rock Salt. Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
Second.
Again, this is kind of another routine purchase. We got to experience this a lot in the last few weeks, unfortunately, and this locks in our unit pricing. Did you any, want to add anything, Gordon? I mean, is our supply is good these days? I know there have been years where they're, they're difficult to acquire the salt or what are, what's the market like now?
So far, the, the, the stockpile is fine. Just, you know, it varies from year to year. We did put a huge dent in our existing stockpile over the, the holiday season. So hopefully that's it, but better, better be prepared.
My compliments to the service torrent outstanding, given it was Christmas holiday and kept the roads clean and open and touch, so nice job.
And we're under some of the most difficult circumstances we'll probably ever experience. It was really, really well done by everybody. So thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Very none. Jamie, please call the roll. Councilman Gath.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Capell.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Seven yeses. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Great. We're going to move to the Public, Public Safety Committee, Councilperson Capell.
Yes, we have one resolution. Jamie, can you please read resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash oh five by title only?
Authorizing the purchase of one replacement police supervisor cruiser and one replacement command vehicle for the police department.
Move that we adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash oh five. Second. Are there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Jamie, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Gath.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes.
Councilman Capell.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Okay, we'll move to miscellaneous business. Mr. Walz.
You mentioned the job Public Works did. I'm sure everyone else will give you a part of their update, but I know buyer was busy. I know even facilities maintenance busy. We had broken lines in rec center and so it was, it was a busy holiday for our employees as they were all in here Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, unfortunately. So I mentioned, so two things, I mentioned previously in a communication that in a future meeting, we plan on having an update from the developer of the neighborhood at Summer Park, just to let you know where everything is regarding to the hospital and the condos and what have you, and they may have another idea of some sort. I think that's still being worked out. But even if they don't, they'll still give you an update on that. So look for that in the next few meetings or two. And then just thought I'd take the opportunity to just quickly highlight some twenty twenty-two items that we can kind of pat ourselves on the back on. We will do a more in-depth annual report of all the different departments, but I just thought I'd pick out a few random ones. First of all, as you know, Gordon's always excited about roundabouts and so two-thirds of our roundabouts got completed in twenty twenty-two and, you know, the third one will be done soon. But the really, the really exciting news is so far the accident rate is half of what it was before. Hope it's even eventually lower as people get used to it and what have you. But even more importantly, while the accident rate was twice what it is now, we typically experience about twenty percent bodily injuries and we've had zero bodily injury. So the accidents we've had, and that's been, that's been the finding of, of most roundabout studies is that the accident rates go down, but more importantly, the intensity of them drastically increases. So, so Gordon's probably pretty excited about that. He will also be excited about getting some funding for the central loop system for twenty-three. We got six hundred thousand dollars for that. So looking forward to doing that. The budget, you know, that's always a subject people ask about. I heard some comments tonight about the budget. While withholding and your overall net effect of withholding was down a little bit, a couple percent, especially combined with refunds. Overall, net profit was, was one of our top years, was the, the top year. And overall, we improved, as you know, our financial position to, we have a reserve fund of over sixty million. So you know, very, very good to come out of that last two to three year cycle and, and last year was, was a good opportunity. On the ED side, I think probably it's really understated, the, the redevelopment of Procter and Gamble site. I know that council committed and helped with that project, but I, I think, you know, I can't understate how important that would be. Those type of sites will sit in communities for ten, fifteen years. You've seen that in Norwood with the Camaro facility and hotel over in Sycamore Township, I think it is. And to see that, and if you've driven by that, it's a, it is, they're really massively moving along. So I think that's a really exciting thing. That'll set us up. I heard someone say Intel or something like that. It's way too big for that site, but you know, the idea and the sentiment is still there, that it represents an opportunity down the road. And then, of course, you got concept approval of the blue. That's a significant milestone. I know you still have to do some more approval of that. On the safety service side, you may recall late last year, there was significant swearing in and a number of new officers and promotions and evolution of the command staff as part of the succession plan that's going to happen over the next few years. I think that's, you know, that shouldn't be understated also, you know, those things. To have them done and know where they're going to be and be very smooth as opposed to sometimes jurisdictions are trying to figure out who the next chief or what it's going to be and what have you. A lot of kudos to that, to that department. The rec department or in, in, in the recreation world and Town Square was finalized, the Town Square plans were finalized. It's out the bid. We hope to award those bid. I think February is the plan. We'll see what the, what the pricing is on that. But the good news is so far we're getting some interest from bidders. Whereas last year, we couldn't even get bidders to show up. So looking forward to that. We received some state funding on that. And lastly, record golf rounds. I know it's a pretty obscure thing, but it is two years in a row where we're, where we're continuing to set records on that. So there's going to be a lot more items that you'll see in the annual report. Looking forward to wonderful twenty-three with all of you. Hope you had a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year's. That's all I have.
Yes. So a few folks have mentioned the blue tonight and that did receive a positive recommendation from Planning Commission last week with conditions. And I wanted to ask council how you would like to receive that in the future. At this point, it would just be a vote on a resolution. We've already done the public hearing. There typically wouldn't be a presentation associated with that. However, however, if council is interested in seeing the, the design again and going through the full presentation, we can certainly do that. I just need to know, do you want it on the same agenda? Do you want it at the beginning of a meeting? Do you want it right before you vote on it? Kind of an unusual circumstance because we don't normally bring this part back to council.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, the easiest thing is just vote on a resolution.
Changed anything with the exception of the recommendation from.
The conditions, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's other than the condition. So we, but as far as the design of the project, it's, it's identical.
Right.
The only question I remember from Planning Commission was the, well, one of the questions is the median in the corner, what they're going to do at the corner from an artistic standpoint.
Which will come back for future approval.
So they're going, okay, then, so.
I think they had some concerns about palettes, colors, finishes.
Yeah, and they can certainly bring a material board if that's something that you want to see. It's, it's up to you all. I, they'd be happy to come and give a half hour presentation and walk you through the model if you want to see it again.
I was at Playing Commission. The presentation was very, very good.
I think, seems like it's such an important project. It might not be a bad idea to you know, that there's, I can't imagine there's anyone that's not aware of what's going on, but just to keep it fresh and out in front of people.
Well, and just I, I, I think to raise the awareness and, and to let them have another chance to, to walk through the drawings. I, I don't know that hour on it, but.
It'll be an hour.
Can we do a Cliff Notes version?
I will ask. I will ask her a Cliff Notes version. Would, would you like it on the same agenda as a vote? We could do it at the beginning um during hearings from outside agencies, and then you would vote later.
I, I mean, personally, I think we've been looking at this project for a very long time, and we've seen it, and if it's just kind of a refresher course, I mean, that would, that would be my preference.
Yeah, because we don't see it every day, you know, so it's, it's a, a fair amount of time, so I think it would be good.
Yeah, I agree. And also, let's make sure we have the people at the meeting who will be prepared to talk about the median issue. Because I suspect we'll be pressed to reopen that item.
Okay, and then I also wanted to let you know, over the holidays, we learned um the dates of the upcoming sister city visit. So our friends from Ilmenau, Germany will be coming April twenty-fourth through May first. Mark your calendars. That's all.
Julie.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Gordon?
Yeah, just wanted to uh notify you and the public. Um, so there is a project that's going to be happening on Cooper Road, and it is not a city project. It is an ODOT project. They will be working on the overpass bridge over I seventy-one. And this is just immediately east of the school on Cooper Road, and it's technically in Montgomery's area. Um, but they will have to close that bridge to traffic from uh March to May of this year. So the detour will be uh to Kenwood Road, up Kenwood Road to Pfeiffer, and then uh over into Montgomery Road, down to Cooper Road again. So, and there's a secondary, that's the main detour route. There's a secondary detour route through Zig Zag Road. So I just want to let you uh be aware of that. It will be significant impact uh to traffic.
So, but it's just for two months, April?
Uh, it's uh March through May.
March through May, okay.
Yep.
Brian?
Thank you. Um, just really quick, we just wanted to um share for a second just uh our plans for the summer. Um, again, I've personally been getting a lot of questions recently about Friday night concerts, and I think folks are just planning out their summer, et cetera, and our concerts are pretty beloved. So folks are now noticing that we're not hosting our Friday night concerts. Just a reminder to council for anybody that you speak to or asks. Um, of course, that's because we're planning town square. The space will be completely under construction. Um, asking our staff to, you know, shoulder the load of the park project as well as find another place for Friday night concerts. Just didn't seem to make sense. We're not in a position really to do that. Tuesday night's concerts will continue. They'll be back here in the park, and actually, we'll have that scheduled out here pretty soon. I just wanted to give everybody a quick reminder. Most folks that I've talked to have really completely understood, and we've explained the situation. I told them that, hey, when they come back, you're going to be in a beautiful new park, and, and everything's been pretty good so far. I just wanted to send out a quick reminder. Thank you.
Thanks. Chief Feathers?
Uh, just one item tonight. I just wanted to remind council tomorrow is Courtney Brooks' uh last shift for the fire department. So she's dedicated twenty-five years of service to the city. Uh, one to four o'clock at the North Fire Station, just a meet and greet. So if you have an opportunity to come out and see her on her last day, uh, we would be appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Noel? Rachel, I saw you out there. Paul? Amy?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Counselor Pacheco?
Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff? So thank you, and I do have one item, piece of legislation that is, uh, was put in the packet. Before I get to the substance of the legislation, do want to uh address again some of what I mentioned at the last meeting as well. I did submit the legislation in accordance with our administrative code, meaning that it got to the solicitor for legal review and to the clerk in time to be placed on the agenda, but it was not placed on the agenda. Now, the, the four resolutions we did, we did see on the agenda tonight, and we've already dispatched with, were written by city staff and placed directly on the agenda without any prior permission from council. Mine was not. This creates a, a oddball situation where people who are not elected to city council can write legislation and place it directly on council's agenda. Whereas those of us who are actually elected to city council, when we write legislation, it gets put into the second-class legislation pile and has to go through additional steps to get placed on the agenda. The purpose of an agenda and posting it on the website is to communicate to residents what is going to be discussed at the meeting. It's not meant to be a tally of, of what legislation some people like, or do we like who wrote it? It's just meant to communicate to residents, what are we going to be discussing here? And residents ought to be able to go onto our website before the meeting and see the full list of things that we'll be discussing and not just a cherry-picked version of that. So our rules do not allow for that practice. I don't know how that's become the, the custom here, but it's a bad custom. It's not backed by the rules, and we simply need to stop doing it. Now, on to the substance of the legislation itself. I guess we'll call it resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash oh six. Since the last one we came up with was oh five, it provides for a one hundred-dollar economic development stimulus grant to all full-year two thousand twenty-two Blue Ash residents, meaning if you lived here all of last year, you get, you would get a one hundred-dollar uh economic stimulus grant. And the way this came about is when you, when you look at the economic situation of our country right now, inflation has hit families particularly hard over the past year plus. People are increasingly using credit to pay their bills. Delinquencies are on the rise with some of those numbers being alarmingly high. And we, we have helped people pay bills before, just a few months ago, when we helped a developer get a four-point-six-million-dollar grant from the state of Ohio, which then required a twenty-five percent match. Instead of saying to the developer, you need to pay the one-point-five-million-dollar match to get the four-point-six-million dollars back from the state, we're going to pay this bill for you. And if we can help developers with their bills, we've got to at least take an honest look at, do we need to help residents with their bills as well? Then you would need to look at, what is our fiscal position? Is it fiscally responsible? Can we support it? Because that's
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Are we, are, uh, have we entered into debate on this topic? I don't, I don't believe the uh resolution is before us as a motion.
In miscellaneous business, I think you're, I think you're free to make any kind of comments that you want. We are not debating legislation because he hasn't even made a motion to put this legislation to be vetted, let alone to find out all the logistics of actually completing the legislation, so I don't think
Thank you for the correction. I withdraw my point of order.
Now, if the counselor Pacheco has any other, if I'm not interpreting it correctly, but I think, yeah, I think he has the, the ability to speak his piece.
Okay. So when we look at our fiscal position, it's very strong. In fact, I've, I've gone back through several years of records. Every summer, we do a, a performance evaluation for the city manager, and part of that is, is he makes his comments, we review and make our comments. The comments from the uh, in the city manager's portion of it in summer of two thousand eighteen is we had a thirty-two-million-dollar cash balance, which is quite strong. Uh, the comment was also added in there. Our current budget reserves continue to be very healthy. The city manager and a unanimous council agreed that that was an excellent number. By two thousand and twenty, we, we raised those from thirty-two million to forty-nine million dollars. And when we sat down in the summer of two thousand twenty-two to do the performance evaluation, that number stood at over sixty million dollars. The last number I saw from the city as of around late November or December twenty twenty-two had an estimate of over sixty-three million dollars, which comes out to forty-seven hundred, you know, the equivalent of forty-seven hundred dollars per residence. And if, in the financial report we received today, there's additional, additional numbers you can look at as well. So this is an extremely strong position. The legislation as proposed here would top out at maybe one-point-one or one-point-two million dollars, less than two percent of our estimated reserve. It's important when we look at making financial decisions. So if you follow, say, companies on Wall Street and, and what are their financial goals? Companies don't, at least the successful ones, they don't just say, we want to decrease our debt or increase dividends or make investments. The great companies want to simultaneously achieve all of those goals at once. And great cities as well can simultaneously achieve all of our goals at once. We are definitely in a position where we can maintain an A-plus level of cash reserves, have an A-plus ability to make all the investments that we need to make, and provide a small amount of assistance to our residents during times like these where it's become much more needed, and with the prognosis of, over the next year, and our economy did not be strong. I'm very happy, and I hope everybody is, that we are fortunate enough to be able to do all of these things at once. So the, the legislation in front of you, which I'll call resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash oh six, I will move for passage. There a second? And apparently not, so.
In a second, do you have anything else you'd like to talk about?
Um, no, that was my only issue. Thank you.
Jill?
Thank you, Mayor. Not too many things very important. Again, just to reiterate gratitude for the hard work of the um Public Works facilities, that are safety folks in uh during a difficult holiday season, and to wish everyone a happy new year. And I can tell at the rec center for sure that it is New Year's. It is busy. I was there at a meeting uh this evening, and we had to park all the way back by the nature. So it was, it's like crazy. So really excited to hear that. Hopefully, it lasts a little longer than it usually does. Um, and the other thing that's kind of exciting, at least exciting for me, and I think a lot of people will enjoy this, um Sugar and Spice Diner is getting ready to have a soft opening, and I'm really excited that that is in the works. People have been really anxious about that, and it's a perfect time of year, I think, to get people up to the park and supporting our wonderful facility up there. So that's all we've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Katie? I'm changing it up.
Um, I have two things. Um, the first is I noticed a second camera over here, Kelly, so thank you very much. Hopefully, everybody uh that chooses to watch at home um or after the fact can, could see the presentation. So I appreciate that. Um, and the second item was about the community reinvestment area. So that was something um brought up several months ago. We discussed whether we wanted to make changes to that. Um, administration went back and looked at options, kind of made a proposal that, hey, we recommend changing it this way. Um, there doesn't seem to, to be too much consensus uh with either the proposal of changing it or changing it at all. So I just wanted to I, I'm not sure if we need to officially untable it, or, but I just wanted to settle that matter that um not going to bring it up again for now, but I do think uh come the council retreat in January, whether I'm, I'm re-elected or not, I think um council should take a look at it again at that time. But for the coming year, it sounds like the, the program as is, it sounds like there's, there isn't really much desire to change it.
Um, I, question on that. I, I must be missing something because I really didn't see a consensus from council to table this. It seemed to me that, that there were a number of people interested in, in seeing where this goes. So, I mean, I'm, I'm missing something, guys?
Ask for if we want to go forward now?
Um.
I think we need a motion. I think we just had, you know, just, because I mean, after listening to everything, personally, I feel like this is a such a successful program, and, and I was, I had definitely had different feelings about it, but after listening to everybody, I think this is something that we can wait and look at it. I think it's a great idea, looking at it at the retreat with the new council.
I'm on that board also, and the general consensus was every, that everybody said was due to inflation right now and the, the slowdown of the building of homes and such, it's just going to slow down.
Mm-hmm.
So it was status quo, so for lack of better words. Um, yeah, I agree. Just review it at a later date. Council retreat or whatever it is. That's fine.
I think that's the same impression I had that, you know, the proposals were interesting to change it, but everybody, there wasn't a compelling reason to do anything at this time, especially with the current economic climate, so.
I, I agree. I, I think that the issues raised and the reasons we, uh, you know, it was asked, should this be something that we should continue as is, are valid. Um just, it's the yet. Um, I, I wouldn't make any changes to it yet, but it's certainly something that I'm interested in and will continue to watch.
When we looked at the overall contiguous map of that area, uh, there are certain areas that are doing very, very well due to, to the, the process. There are some that are just starting up, so you gotta give it time, I think, so.
It will be. Seems like we have pretty much a consensus to do it maybe at the retreat somewhere around that time, so.
About a year from now.
Brian?
I have a couple of things. Uh, if you're still uh watching online, or if you're still in the room tonight, uh, you are prime candidates for two things. The Citizens of Blue Ash Academy is, is coming up. This is a great way to see the behind-the-scenes workings of all our city departments. Um, there is, uh, we sent an email to someone. Is it Susan? Rachel, send a, send a, send a email to Rachel if you're interested, and she'll uh tell you all about that. It's um several weeks, and you go to a different department every week, and you get to see what's going on and get to hear from the, the leaders. So I, I really encourage that for everyone. Um, in addition to that, um, I represent the city on the Sycamore City Schools um Advisory Commission for the Board of Education, and they are looking for uh at-large members who do not currently have students in the schools to be a part of that board. So if you uh either are pre-kids or post-kids or no kids or never kids, whatever, if you don't have um children in the school right now, they're looking for um folks that would be willing to come to a, a nine-month, a year monthly meeting um and provide um opinions and uh recommendations to the school board. If you're interested in that, you can see me. The reserves have been brought up several times, and, and I think the, the council, uh, the administration is doing a good job uh watching this in the, in the recent uh memo uh that you sent. Uh, you anticipated uh several expenses in the coming couple of years, whether that's the pool or the park and different things, um, and how to finance that one way or another. Um, and so I, 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 I think I, I, I'm in agreement that sixty-whatever million dollars is too much uh to be holding in our bank account for a long term. Um, but I think that we have plans to, to pair that back to a, to a, a very robust, but uh less, less generous a, amount in the coming, coming time. Finally, I want to read, I got a, I got a text message, Gordon. I got a text message uh two days after Christmas. Uh, one of my neighbors had gotten their mailbox uh snowplowed. And uh he had, he had texted me on, on Christmas Eve and said, hey, is there anybody that's you think the city would be able to help? You know, what do we do? And I said, give Gordon a call. He uh, he was, sent me a couple days later, kudos to the Public Works crew. I called and left a voicemail this morning. They called back by noon, and the mailbox was replaced uh a little while ago. Uh, thanks so much for these. So, big, big, um, well done. I, I couldn't drive a truck. Uh, they wouldn't let me drive a truck, and uh there's no way that going up and down Kenwood Road to have those mailboxes that close. We don't take a couple out, uh mostly with the weight of the snow, and that was snow and ice that you guys were dealing with, and that happens, and you guys do a great job of turning around and responding and making it right for our, for our residents. And so thank you uh very much for that continued good work. Please pass the kudos along.
Um, well, Jill took my win there, but
Oh, I'm
Yeah, I, I'm telling you, Sugar and Spice, yeah, will be open beginning this coming week.
Well, they have that kind of
Soft opening.
It's like very soft. Kind of thing, yeah.
It's like really soft.
Yeah, and uh, of course, this coming weekend, give me a who-day. So uh
You'll be at the game, yes?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, but happy new year to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks for the shirts, too. Nice, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to tell you, I just came back from overseas, and I'm so glad to be here back end of the trip. I was thinking that somebody can pick me up from there and get me back here. I will be very appreciated because I was so tired and everything. So I really appreciate coming back here, and uh happy new year to everyone. Thanks.
Uh, quick thing. Um, we had talked about this, I don't know if we talked about it in council, especially the ward people. If you see any burned-out streetlights, just pull over, get the number off of them so we can call them in. It's easier for the ward people, obviously, but if you see something, just think about it.
Where do those go, Mr. Mayor?
On this, well, I mean, there's a number on the
Once I have it, I have a couple, and I haven't, I just
Once I have it, I have a couple and I haven't, do I just?
You can contact our office. Carol Lessor with our office will call them into Duke Energy if they are Duke Energy lights.
And there's a, there's usually a metal tag on there, which kind of tells you the number of the
There's a tag and it's done online. You can, we will take those and get those sent to Duke Energy for repair.
Thank you. So there's a rooster somewhere on Bluing Terrace or at the UC Blue Ash location. And it's not bad at my house, but my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live next to one and they're, they're really loud. I have not had a complaint yet. But if I get some complaints, I may be coming to ask you guys if we may want to look at doing something to regulate that.
Kentucky Fried Chicken?
Yeah. So we'll see. Those things can crank it out. I was kind of blown away. And last, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, I just want to say how lucky I feel to be a part of this group. It is a wonderful city. You know, we're temporary, but, but these guys make it run, make it work and make it what it is. And thank you all for your service and your loyalty. It, it is an amazing group of people. With that, we're going to move into executive session for economic development assistance to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, secrets or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance. Or with respect to negotiations with other political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. And also for property acquisition, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at competitive bidding. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or marketing advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. And also for personnel matters, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
Second, Amy, will you please call the role?
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes.
Councilman Gaff.
Yes.
Mayor Serken.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, everybody.